Please call the roll.
Bowman?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Dowling?
There.
Stelling?
Here.
Yeah. Eric? Sherman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
You guys are all right.
You guys are throwing me out.
How was the yeses and the names add up?
Dowling and Stelling are both here. All right. Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting June 21st, 2021. Item D, approval of the minutes of the special meeting July 7th, 2021. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $270,609.41 and payroll expenses of $202,656.99. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. A is a special Alva Recreation Complex board meeting on June 21st, 2021. Mr. Sherman?
Uh, it was a routine meeting, went over the current revenue and expenses. And then also had a meeting with a gentleman that offers a system to do energy savings for the city and then also sells air purification. And that was pretty much it. Remembered some CDs that were renewing. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Unless I missed something. Rec part? Oh, did we talk about rec part?
No, that's the marks.
Oh, the rec part, it said finance. My bad. Rec part meeting, oh, that was actually the vote on the, I'm sorry, I was, oh, okay. I was writing my finance notes. Um, that was the special meeting we had right before the city council meeting that voted to approve the route.
Any questions for Mr. Sherman? Anything to add to your finance committee report?
No, you know, I mean, I'm pretty good on the finance committee report, but that was, sorry about that. It's gonna be an interesting meeting.
Any questions on the finance committee report? Thank you.
All right.
Item B is the Alva Hospital Authority meeting on June 22nd, 2021, and special meeting June 28th, 2021. Mr. Bowman?
Okay, uh, let's start off here. Uh, the hospital has hired several new staff members. Uh, revenue cycle manager, Michelle Hamilton, I believe she'll be starting in September. They had a walk-in Wednesday where they hired four new employees. David Camper, HR director, resigned and Ms. Kiki will fill in for her on the interim. They had a clean audit. All the budgets were approved. Doctors Burke and Burke will be starting in September in the professional building. They appointed Dr. Scott Evans to active staff and Ray G. Pappy as MD. They are also working with eight other hospitals for medical staff revisions. Discuss capital budget items. They went into three categories from high, moderate, to low priority. And I don't know how to say this, the biggest deal which leads into the special meeting was a ly- lyce- lycoscopy, laprosco- laparoscopic machine. Anyway, that was the special meeting. We were gonna, it was gonna be approved, then there was some thoughts that there were some functions of the machine had that we really didn't need, so it'll be discussed tomorrow night. So we had a special meeting and tabled it again and we'll discuss it again tomorrow night. Some of the other expenses they're looking at is ER patient bed monitors, a brand-new wheelchair accessible van provided that there's some grants or money coming in for that. They've got everything categories from high to moderate to low priority. And that laparoscopic tower was the most expensive. The audit, I guess I said that. I guess that's about it.
Council have any questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you, sir. Item C is sanitation committee meeting on June 24th, 2021. Mr. Stelling?
Pretty much just, we discussed poly cars, which has kind of been an ongoing deal. Roll-off prices to where we try to, we just want to try to get maybe to where we don't necessarily compete with a local company. And some, discuss some of the policies that we have with who we have to. Right now it says that if anybody has to use us, we're looking to maybe remedy that where it isn't that. And then we've had some issues with trash trucks where they've had some parts and stuff they've had to go after, so they've been running some routes later. I do believe they've got a new CDL driver hired where he can drive the larger trash truck and everything, so like that might more available to options and stuff.
What's that?
Any questions, but I mean, I can be ordinance and others if we can.
Okay. Are there any questions on the sanitation meeting?
Ordinance committee has just made, we've, uh, we received the business ordinance back. It's been quite a while since we've discussed it. The, the old committee had kind of gone over it with the new members and stuff, had some new ideas and stuff, so we've, uh, had been working on it, some ideas of, go up the mic for, uh, what is it, the little traveling trucks and stuff that come in and stuff to work. We can have a fee for them and then how we can make it toward recover costs to do inspections on them and everything, so what else? There's some that, toward remember, or anything else that?
I wasn't at the last one, so I had the, it looked like we were gonna lower the, uh, the paperwork that Angelica, Angelica gave, to lower rate the fees to $50, wasn't it?
Yeah, we discussed that and stuff, and then, uh, like I said, I think we have, maybe try to use this, Kingfisher, they have a application sheet and stuff, so there's several things for work for the business deal. There's any other questions?
Council have any questions regarding the ordinance committee meeting?
And I may all do water, wastewater while going. We, at the time of our meeting, uh, I don't think they've finalized everything yet on the high school project, or run that line up there yet, so I don't have necessarily update on that. Uh, replacing a water line south of town. There's some of the pipe that's damaged in transport or, or in moving and stuff, so, and then also the contractor, I guess we had agreed to mark a start point and end point and somewhere that got slipped up, so the contractor actually moved more pipe than what we expected, so we had to try to locate some pipe. If we were to get it from the manufacturer, they would manufacture it, but it's gonna be like, I think it's like a two or three week lead time. And the contractor found something in a wassail and it would be at the same price as new pipe, which is this new pipe tube that we was able to, I think, Labor's supposed to have got it today.
Angelica said that the rest of the water line should be laid in the next 10 days and then they'll test it after that.
Yeah. But we had to, what was it? It was under what the normal spending deal is and everything, but it's like $59 a foot for that, that pipe, but I think where to get like, we needed like another 12, 12 jointers or something like that or something, so it's, I think it's, pipe's about doubled from what Grizzly, I think we bought it for, everything, best way apparently is now. Any other questions? I probably made this up.
Any questions on the water wastewater committee meeting?
Like I said, part of that is because the age of the pipe is why it's broken and that we were gonna, it's gonna cost us about six, a little over 16,000 for that and the overrun.
Yeah.
I guess, did they say what caused that pipe to go bad or anything like that, or is it just?
I know there was some, I talked to Ronnie and, and he mentioned that there were some that just did the transportation of and stuff, because they loaded up, they took it down to Sackton under Eastburg Corner, and then the, the contractor had come around and I seen one day, they came around with a large loader with forks on it, and then they, they loaded it up and they, they would take it down there and stuff, so I'm sure just in the process of that and I think some of the, I don't know, some of the deals too, they were supposed to test it and stuff to see, make sure that, I think Ronnie said on the ends were the ma- the main, main problems and stuff, that, uh, cracks or something like that, so. But I think we would have had enough had, we'd been really close had the contractor not gone by, that we, we didn't get the ending point marked, so they kept doing it, I guess, and took out a pipe.
If I remember, that was the majority of the additional cost, was the overrun?
Yes, yes. I mean, otherwise I think we'd been fine because we had, we had an extra pipe that between the two and, and for what we needed to cover the over, overrun and stuff, so I think the biggest issue.
We had 160 feet that they went too far and then 240 feet that were damaged, as she said, due to the, yeah, that was a lot, it was a lot the same.
Any other questions for the water wastewater committee meeting? All right. Jump back up here, you guys are gonna make me work, make sure I don't miss anything here. Planning Commission meeting on June 28th. Planning Commission had two action items on that agenda. One was a zoning change request from residential to commercial at the corner of Choctaw and Noble, across from the county shed. That zoning change request was denied. And then there was also, and it's an item on this agenda for the Alva Arena Authority, a survey that the Planning Commission completed, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Questions regarding the Planning Commission meeting?
Which one was denied?
A zoning change request from residential to commercial. The individual was wanting to, to build a mechanic shop in the neighborhood there and that request was denied.
Okay.
Item E is Alva Arena Authority meeting on July 6th. You can see the, the minutes in the packet. I did not attend that, but they are, Neil Williams gave an update on some of the things going on with the Arena Authority at the Chamber of Community Coffee last Friday. And they do still have plans to move forward. Like I said, we've got an item on our agenda, you know, related to their, their process with their funding through the federal government, so we'll get to that in a little bit. Economic Development Committee meeting on July 8th, 2021. Mr. Martin, you have a report for us?
Routine meeting, general discussion. The two main topics would be SOG grant that the city's offering. We talked about possibly partnering somewhat with the chamber as far as marketing that and then discuss the arena project and what we can be doing or what we need to be looking at doing to capitalize on future development out there. That's about it.
Any questions regarding the Economic Development Committee meeting? Thank you. Item H is the Alva Public Library Board meeting on July 12th. Mr. Dowling?
The board was informed that the update of financial information was unavailable for this time, but it will be prepared for the next budget meeting. I think we're voting on some of the items listed in this current council meeting. She also, the library budget, and then it mentions we talked about the POs being outstanding, which is what we're voting on now from my understanding. We had an increase of 746 more materials over the previous months checked out. 392 items were added to the physical action, 123 of them being DVDs. The library has completed its inventory on the youth library and very few materials were missing. I think it was eight were missing and two were unknown, which from my understanding is a lot less than previous years. We also, the library had a retirement, yeah, so I don't butcher that name, should I?
Oh. Marcia Dr- Drilling?
Drilling.
Drilling? I butchered it.
She was the youth library. She was in charge of the youth library and they're looking at filling that position with some part-time, and I think they have some chance to save a little bit of money on the salary, so that's a pretty positive thing. And I guess, I think to wrap it up, I think one of the most interesting things the library is having is on August 14th, they'll have an Alva native who will be doing book signings there. Leslie Williams will be doing some book signings on August 14th. And I guess, on a much less satisfying note, the library's gonna have to look at some accommodations to work with some state laws in their elevator in case of emergencies. There was a price increase on their phone line that is more than they need to be paying, so they're looking at some other means, which hopefully when that's all said and done, it'll save money instead of cost more money, but it's to keep in line with the elevator emergency phone call requirements. So if somebody gets stuck on the elevator, there has to be a phone inside, but so then a call. Hopefully nobody will ever use it. But I think that pretty much wraps up all the major issues, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions regarding the backroom meeting? Thank you. Item J is the Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on July 12th, 2021. In addition to the routine business and reports, they did take, they did have discussion on, well, I'll say that the new board member was at his first meeting, Terry Klein was there, welcomed him to the meeting. We did have a discussion on fuel charging policies. We're gonna have the staff go back and structure that similar to what our charging policies are for hangar rent. Similar, but not exactly the same. Discussion was had regarding purchasing or leasing an ice machine. I think the plan is, and it didn't require any action by the commission, but the plan is to lease an ice machine to have out there. The pilots when they come in, a lot of times they'll have a cooler in their aircraft that acts as a air conditioner and that runs on ice, so it helps out with that. Of course, obviously icing down a drink, you know, is handy as well, so. And fuel cells were good. Fuel cells were $18,653. I will say Derek's been doing a great job. Derek Porson is the manager out there and he's really been great with customer service. I think that in combination with our fuel prices is driving a lot more traffic out to our airport. And I think the, the folks on the airport grounds out there are really pleased with him, and the board's pleased with him, and he's just been getting a lot of maintenance stuff taken care of and, and being real customer service oriented. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Just out of curiosity, the cost effectiveness of renting ice machine rather than purchasing it outright?
The objective that they, that was discussed was being that the first year would include on a lease, would include the maintenance on the machine as well as the installation setup and all that. Whatever we do with a lease, the money that we pay for the lease could go towards purchasing in the future, so trying to figure out if we were getting the right size machine and, and you know, all that kind of stuff, along with the first year's worth of maintenance. The lease made sense, since, particularly since the, what we spent on the lease could be.
Leasing a bike, possible.
Yeah. And so that's kind of where they landed with that. And, you know, Derek will get some more information before he does it, but we essentially authorized him to, to take care of it however between he and Angelica they saw fit, but pros and cons, lease costs a little bit more, but if we're trying to figure out if it's the right machine or anything like that, this will give us a year worth of time to consider that.
I know the ground by, the grounds look really good. I mean, it's taking a real good care of it out there.
He's doing a good job taking care of it. He, he does need some help. I think all of our departments need a little bit of help right now, looking for staff, but, but he's, he's coming up late when people show up and, you know, need fuel and he's, he's, he's doing a good job, going above and beyond. So, really pleased. All right. First up committee meeting on July 13th. Mr. Winters?
Started the meeting off, we've had multiple illnesses and injuries in the fire department through COVID with a couple of them contracting, I think one contracted and one was just out, right? If I remember right. And then we have a, another member out due to medical reasons. We have an open position on the fire department. There was discussion on having someone kind of ready to go to take over in the event that the person who's out now may not come back, which is apparently a possibility. So Chief Miller was asking, can we, can we go ahead and proceed with the training process on getting that person ready to take in that position as taking one of our volunteer members? So we had some discussion on that and decided that, that should probably be a good idea to go ahead and have someone ready. Never hurts to have better training even on the volunteer force, so. We discussed the council handbook, it was mostly presented to us to kind of review. This is something that we actually can receive a, it's not really a grant, but receive money back by going through the process of reviewing our handbook every year and some training that didn't happen last year, or I believe the year before that, last year COVID, the year before that.
I think it did happen in 19.
Was it, it was the year before, it was last year, it didn't happen today. So we're looking at going back through that, going through, going through the handbook. Once that's been kind of discussed, that'll come, I believe, to council for final approval. And that was the, the majority of what we discussed.
Any questions regarding the personnel committee meeting? I don't remember if it was reported in here or not, but the, the insurance premiums that we were waiting on, they came back just as we anticipated, so there's not, not gonna be any better than rebooking the insurance premium. The cemetery special meeting on July 13th, 2021. The minutes are in the, in the packet. I did not attend that meeting either. Looked like a pretty routine meeting, they, they're talking about upkeep on the cemetery.
It was, it was an opportunity to learn a lot about lawn maintenance, if you had the ability to attend.
You went?
Yeah, yeah, it was, they reviewed, the major issue was reviewing spraying. They were looking at two different spraying techniques. I think they ruled through deliberation with some other cemeteries that spraying around the cemetery in the long run is not good because it can cause deterioration where you spray specifically between those items. So it was voted not to continue with the spraying test, but to continue with broadleaf and another form of spraying to cut down on stickers. There's, I think he said, B and D maybe? And one other field had an expansive sticker infestation over the past few years.
Catch up.
Apparently, cut the lawn two inches and then you're at the end, I think near August, and during those months raise it three, and it'll help the grass outgrow the weeds.
There you go. We all love weeds. Item N, arson building committee meeting. Mr. Sherman?
I didn't cover this one much, did I? We met about the LED conversion, since been looking into, was presented almost a year ago, about an LED conversion for the rest of our buildings. There's an O G and E grant that goes along with that, and so we've kind of been trying to decide whether we wanted to do new fixtures or just revamp the ones we have for LED. And we approved some, I think we approved to go, to look at what we need to fill out for a bid. We haven't actually approved the bidding items yet, but, and then we added a routine item to that meeting, which is just a constant going over of the scheduled maintenance and things that are going on with all the buildings in the city that had not been a routine item before. And committee felt like that would be a really good idea to just kind of have a running list of, as things kind of are going downhill, a running list of how old our air conditioners are and things like that, so that we can kind of decide in the future when capital's available, what we need to be replacing instead of waiting for stuff to go bad, so. I think that was pretty much it. If you answer any questions?
Any questions regarding the arson buildings committee meeting? Thank you.
Oh, disc golf.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we're looking closer at the, is that right? Greg did that, right? Yeah, we're looking at the disc golf and kind of talking about maybe forming a, a task force committee of people in the town that know more about disc golf than I and Greg do. So just to kind of see what's viable and what's good to play on and kind of what our boxes need to look like and maybe even look for some sponsorships for the, what you call them, holes? Were they holes?
I saw holes that I probably.
I called them. All right, well, anyway, so the chain nets that go up is the holes for disc golf, maybe having some, some people sponsor those. And then saw some examples of some, the gentleman sent that kind of started us on this project. He is a professional golf, disc golf player from the area, so that was all the personal. Sorry.
Any information or questions?
Was he, will he be able to possibly be the one with the knowledge that you guys spoke of earlier to see, or is that not something?
The pro?
The pro, yeah.
Yeah, he's helping us. Yeah, he's helping design the course and everything. We're just trying to get some community input because he's talking to us about difference between beginner and intermediate courses and different stuff like that, and then I'm just not, I don't disc golf, so. It would be smarter to get somebody that knew, that would be playing on it.
He thinks Hatfield Park lays out really well. There's some, some considerations to take into, there's some safety issues to take into consideration because of the playground structures that are there. You don't want a three-year-old getting whacked upside the head with a frisbee and so, but he's been familiar with orienting disc golf courses in and around playground type areas safely and, but he did send us some design options to consider and really, it seems like to me it's a relatively inexpensive endeavor. There'll be some money in the nets, the chain nets and, but I think other than that, maybe some tree clearing and a little bit of volunteer labor, it shouldn't be terribly expensive. As far as my report goes, I did attend a summer merit conference in Lawton toward the beginning of, or the end of June. That went really well, there was a lot of good information shared regarding, you know, council business manager interactions as well as some information regard, and we'll brand it and talk briefly about it, but energy efficiency and energy savings for municipalities, air purification, things like that. Maybe some things that come back before council. Maybe some things that come back before council at a later date as we learn more. We we got an update on the American Rescue Plan funding and that update has not changed since the end of June, but we're still waiting on the state to issue their their rules for distributing the money or for monitoring the money. The money will come, the money is guaranteed to come to the municipalities. The, they call them entitlement cities and non-entitlement cities. The entitlement cities are those with a population of $50,000 or more, or 50,000 or more population. Non-entitlement cities are everybody else. So really like four cities in Oklahoma have gotten funding through this already. The projections on what we are to receive is still in that $800,000 range. It is so far still projected that those can be used on water infrastructure, broadband and/or infection control measures to be taken by municipalities. But like I said, none of that is set in stone yet, but the number hasn't changed. It still looks like we're going to get a significant amount of money to add to our revenue with some strings attached, of course. I've been real pleased with the council members and their participation in our committee meetings. We've probably, those of you that have been on council for a while, have known that our committee meetings have not been regular, have not necessarily always been productive, but thank you to you all for making those meetings productive and beneficial to our community. I really appreciate that. Of course, Angelica does a lot of work making sure that everything is covered for us when we get to those meetings. And and so her and the staff are doing a good job keeping us on track so that we can have all the information we need to make good decisions for our community. So I did want to bring that up. And I think that concludes my report. A lot of things going on in town. Any questions? I'll briefly share some of the things that Angelica shared with me. The Flint Street project started today or restarted today. They're, they've got the road blocked down there to resurface the street down there at the, by the Minno Street intersection. They did run into some problems with the zipping machine, but I'm talking to Ronnie this afternoon. It sounds like they've got those taken care of and they're moving forward with getting that finished. Woods County District One jumped in and helped out with some of the dirt work on the north side that needed to be done where some of it had washed in. And so I appreciate Commissioner Hamel and his crew helping us out there. The water line going for the high school to the high school, we are still waiting word back from the contractors when they're going to start that project, but they have been notified that they want to bid and are approved to start. Same situation with the roof at the ARC. They've notified the contractors that they've been awarded the bid, but we're still waiting on them to to find out when they're going to mobilize and get those projects started. That about covers it. Of course, there's more stuff going on in the city than that, but I'm happy to try to answer any questions anybody may have.
You know, I may already know this and forgotten, but on the well field, we're drilling that well, that offset well, has that started?
I don't know if it's, I don't think it has started, but contractors have been in contact with us and they're, they are preparing to mobilize.
Okay, I just know that has a deadline.
The other, yeah, we've got to get, as Mr. Winters mentioned, there is a deadline for that because of the REAP grant funds. If we don't expend those funds prior to, I think, September, then we don't have an opportunity to apply for more REAP grants. So that one is definitely time sensitive and they are, they have been in contact and they are preparing to start if they haven't already.
I know that's one thing that I'm like, I believe there was some discussion too about whether or not with the increase in prices that, but they admitted to that. So they will be.
Yeah, they're locked in.
Yeah, yeah, they're locked in. So.
How long have we been waiting for this to drill?
This one, this project's not very long. I mean, we just.
We just approved that a month or two ago.
Yeah, it's been since the first of, well, I thought we, I thought we went out to bid for it after the new, after the election.
That's what I thought. Right. It may have been right before.
Somewhere in there.
When did we get the REAP grant?
We got the REAP grant last fall, this fall. Late fall, maybe early winter, I'm not positive.
Well, I think.
But that that offset well, I mean, the engineering and all that, you know, took place and we were ready to go on that.
I think overall bids did come in higher than we expected, but that was probably allowing for a lot of the stuff that had started going up. Because the engineering nearly made estimates back whenever it wasn't quite as high. So as the bids came in, I believe they were somewhat higher, but it'd probably be cheaper if they went out now.
Yeah, those those bids were higher. Any other questions? All right. Item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anybody would like to make a public comment, please step up to the podium, introduce yourself, and we'll give you two minutes to speak. All right. We're glad you're here. Item eight is discussion on the mayor's committee appointments for Personnel Committee, Parks and Buildings Committee. Need to, this was amended and it should not have been amended when it was amended. But it is Personnel Committee, Parks and Buildings Committee, Public Safety Committee. With Mary Hamilton resigning and Sadie Beer coming in, we or I am asking Greg Bowman to serve on Personnel Committee and I'm asking Sadie to serve on Parks and Buildings and Public Safety. We'll see how things go. I'd like to get Sadie on one more committee to balance things out. Greg was the choice for Personnel Committee due to his management experience with Ryder Personnel Management and the Ryder. And Sadie, I just felt like she would be able to fill Mary's shoes on the other two committees just fine. But we may move some, we may do a little bit more moving around. I'm not certain on that. So. But you will know if that were to be the case. Is there any discussion on that? All right. Item nine is discussion action on the pool funding advisory committee. Shoot. I didn't print those out for tonight. We may need to take a recess and do that. But I did send to, I think it got included in the packet and emailed out to everyone, but a list of 11 individuals to consider for the for the pool finance committee. Those individuals, I contacted each one of them to find out if they were willing to serve and able to serve. And they are Allison Pinko, Paul Barton, Blake Jordan, Brandon Sherman, Renee Green, Bill Beeler, Kim Baugh, Dalton Beeler, Chad Fisher, Kate Decker, and Suze Walter. Allison, I'll just briefly go through some of these and why I asked them. Allison had been actively involved during the 2018 bond issue election regarding the future of the pool. She asked a lot of questions, had a lot of input and you know, that kind of thing. And of course she has children that are of that age that would be using the pool. Paul has served on the task force up to this point with help trying to figure out what the design plans would be moving forward. Paul's got a good background in, in, you know, municipal planning projects and other, you know, planning and engineering type things. Blake Jordan, Blake and I had, actually had several conversations about the pool while he and I were in administrator, nursing home administrator school together. And I think he has some good ideas and some would be able to offer some decent strategies for for funding. Brandon has been involved as a council representative, but also as a member of the pool finance, uh, pool task force. Renee Green was involved with the pool task force. Bill Beeler has contacted me, you know, prior to announcing that there would be a finance committee regarding some different ideas that he had for for funding and revenue. Kim Baugh has a, has a strong, you know, background in finance. So I thought her, that would lend itself well to this finance committee. Dalton Beeler during the election as well as since then, he and I have had some good conversations regarding the pool as well. And I think that he would be a contributor there. Chad Fisher currently serves on the Recreation Complex Board. He's got kids that age that would use the pool. And he's been a former city council member, so he has an understanding of municipal finance. Kate Decker is, got a strong background in grant writing as well as community development. So I feel like Kate would be a good, good person for the committee. And Suzanne Walter was our most recent manager at the pool and had identified several of the things that that were needing correction and has some ideas on, you know, what things cost and that kind of thing. So those are the recommendations I had. I think I need to, does anybody have that paper?
I don't have the paper. I have the document.
What I'd like for you to do is maybe just have a brief discussion, maybe, you know, if any is needed further than what I've shared. And if there are any other individuals, I mean, I'd like to give a couple of minutes to discuss who those people might be and what would, you know, qualify them to serve as well. And I think though we may end up taking a recess so that I've got, Sadie sent me her feedback on that as well. So I wanted to include that in our discussion, the people that she thought she would want to see on there. Are there any others than the ones listed that should be considered? Okay. Brief recess so I can get my stuff together. Okay. Brief recess. I'm sorry, guys. If you would go through there and circle yes on seven of them. And I will take that and those seven that get the most votes will be the ones that become my recommendation. All right. The top, top six are Paul, Kim, Bill, excuse me. Paul, Kim, Kay, Blake, Alice, and Brandon. That's really five, isn't it?
That's six. There should be seven.
Paul, Kim, Kay, Blake, and Brandon. So that's the top five. And there are three more that have the same number of votes. So Bill, Dalton, and Allison. So I need to choose two of them. Unless somebody has strong feelings to say, well, we need to choose two of them out of Bill Beeler, Dalton Beeler, and Allison Pinko. I'm gonna go with Dalton and Allison.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right. Now we'll get that out of the way. I'd be as discussion in action on the appointment of Paul Barton, Kim Baugh, Dalton Beeler, Kate Decker, Blake Jordan, Allison Pinko, and Brandon Sherman. And I would entertain a motion. Will you do that? You need to vote on if you're gonna have a seven-person committee. Did we already do that?
Oh, it's on here.
Okay. You voted to have a committee, you never voted to establish the number.
All right. My motion specified seven members at the last meeting.
Again?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we can vote on it again, but the motion last time did specify.
I asked the delegate that and she said she didn't want to mention that, so that's fine.
And they may not, I can be honest, I didn't review that part.
Well, let's just do it again.
Okay.
I entertain a motion to establish a seven-person committee.
I'll motion to establish a seven-person committee.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to establish the committee as a seven-person committee for the Pool Funding Advisory Committee. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right. Now we'll get that out of the way. I'd be as discussion in action on the appointment of Paul Barton, Kim Baugh, Dalton Beeler, Kate Decker, Blake Jordan, Allison Pinko, and Brandon Sherman as members to the committee.
I'd make a motion to appoint the members as stated.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Dowling to appoint the members to the committee as stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. We have a small pool finance committee. Thank you, guys. We'll be letting them know their appointments and start getting to work. All right, item 10 on the agenda is a discussion in action to approve Resolution Number 2021-008, a resolution maintaining an investment policy for the City of Alba for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. City has an investment policy and after the 2019-20 audit that was conducted, we needed some changes to that investment policy. The major change is that the treasurer, who prior worked with the city business manager to get direction for how to invest our CDs, we have changed that to be where the treasurer will take their direction from the finance committee. And that's the primary difference there. The treasurer does have that capacity to take the recommendations from the finance committee and reinvest our CDs if appropriate. This does not give anything that would result in expenditures from those CDs would all have to come through council. So it's not, that's not what this policy is regarding, but it's the reinvesting of funds, the investment funds, so.
Would the council still approve the reinvestment? Is that what you're saying?
It happened historically and that's not what this would say.
This basically, it was a one-to-one relationship between the city business manager and the treasurer. Now it's a three-member committee plus the mayor in conjunction with discussion with the treasurer as to what to do with those CDs.
There, there can be, in addition to this, for instance, the Airport Commission wants to take action on all of their CDs, whether to invest or reinvest. So the finance committee recommendation goes to the Airport Commission, the Air Corps of Department of Commerce, and makes the final decision. So if the council were to want to make final decisions on all of those investments, it would be something that we would.
Were you getting kind of professional advice? Is there anybody on the committee or anybody involved that says it's professional?
The treasurer shops out the CDs to all the local banks and he takes the, he tells us what all of the options are for six months, 12 months, 24. He doesn't generally look, he hasn't lately looked past 24 because the rates are terrible. But yes, he shops them out to all the local financial institutions.
An eight percent of the committee with 25%.
Yeah.
Does he have any issues when he's bidding at his, he's the president of Bank Cokton State?
Yeah, we don't have.
He excludes himself from?
I just know that. We don't have any. I don't believe we have any.
He specifically stated at the last meeting, he excludes himself from his bank. Aren't they connected to Bank Central or?
I believe the holding company owns both Bank Central and.
It's a separate company, it's just the same primary owner of both, does exist, but they are different companies.
Different companies owned by the same person.
Yeah, so we have presently CDs at Alba State Community, Bank Central, and Hyblange.
But I certainly think it'd be a good idea to be at least advised of when they were reinvested and submitted. I don't know if it necessarily requires a council approval.
Should come in the finance report, just like when I said he's out shopping them right now, that's what we discussed it. When he comes back with the approval, finance committee will come back with letting you know that those CDs were reinvested and.
And that's, that's always going to be around page five, three, four, five in the finance report, the City of Alba investment, so you can see what CDs there are, when they're coming to you.
I think historically too, of course, probably go with a better rate, but if there's a, you know, some of them matches up, I think we kind of ought to spread it around. Don't favor a certain bank or anything, so we.
We favor whoever has the best rate.
But I mean, if somebody happens to agree, then, you know, kind of, you know, at the same rate or something like that, but we kind of try to, what do you call this, try to move it.
A logical sense of behavior.
Fair enough.
So that's, that's Resolution 2021-008.
I'd make the motion to approve Resolution 2021-008.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve Resolution Number 2021-008, resolution maintaining an investment policy for the City of Alba for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 11 is Discussion and Action on Resolution 2021-009, amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 annual budget for the City of Alba, Oklahoma, increasing the amount by $793. The next three, I think three items on the agenda that are all basically the same type of resolution. These are with regard to revenue for the library. And as Taylor mentioned during his report, these were grants that were received after the budget was set. For Sandra in her reporting with the entities that provided the grants, it's important that she shows that her budget is where it's supposed to be. So this budget amendment allows her to better reflect that in her reports to these entities.
So these are budgeted revenues that were not originally budgeted?
Right.
Correct. And they're resulting expenses?
There would be resulting expenses, yes. There, yeah, all these, all these grants have things that they have to spend money on to do it, so.
And I guess for like the grant items specifically, though, one for, I guess we can talk about it when we get to for the 5521. I guess what I'm asking is, did they spend this money when they already received these items, like for the headphones, right? And so we're just putting the money back that they already spent on out of that budget and accounting for that?
We're not moving any money around, we're just documenting it in our budget.
That it's already been paid, so we're just balancing it essentially.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-009.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to approve Resolution 2021-009, amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 annual budget for the City of Alba, increasing the amount by $793. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
12 is Discussion and Action to approve Resolution 2021-010, amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 annual budget for the City of Alba, Oklahoma, increasing the amount by $552.
I'd motion to approve. As I say, I'd motion to approve Resolution 2021-010.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Item 13 is Discussion and Action to approve Resolution 2021-011, amending the fiscal year 2020-2021 annual budget for the City of Alba, Oklahoma, increasing the amount by $1,000.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-011.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve Resolution 2021-011, increasing the amount by $1,000. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Item 14 is Discussion and Action to engage Angel Johnston and Blazing Game PC to conduct the fiscal year 2020-2021. City of Alba and Alba Trust Authority audits for an amount not to exceed $19,850. As you can see in the background information in the agenda, we went out for bid for our auditor. At the time, our auditor had told us that they were no longer able to meet the needs of our city. And after that bid process in 2016, we approved going with Angel Johnston and Blazing Game. They were considered the lowest and best bid. They gave us a five-year cost in their proposal at $100,450 of the, as the, I think that was projected. $19,850 isn't 20% of that, but it's actually less, so that is the amount that we would incur with them in 2020 and 2021 year, which actually we would pay this year, but it's for last year's audit. Since we wrapped out the 2021, 2021 books, this is the audit of those books, last year's finances. So I've, you know, I've been pleased with them. I think they've opened our eyes to some things that were going on that needed to be shown. And they've worked with us very well, I think, over the last four years, so I would either entertain discussion or a motion.
I'd make a motion to engage Angel Johnston and Blazing Game PC to conduct the fiscal year 2020-2021 City of Alba and Alba Trust Authority audits for an amount not to exceed $19,850.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Stelling to engage Angel Johnston and Blazing Game PC for the 2020-2021 financial audits for the City of Alba Trust Authority not to exceed $19,850. Is there any further discussion?
Is this not something we bid out every year, or did we sign a five-year agreement with them, or?
No.
It's a, they projected out five years and said, this is what we would be wanting to do for that five-year period, but it has to be approved on an annual basis.
Okay. And they've been under that total amount for the five years of that time?
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't answer historically, but I don't think, I don't remember any budget amendments.
It's always been $19,000 something. I don't ever remember in 20 of the, however many years I've covered on this.
I was curious on the money that was missing at the airport. How long was that money missing before they uncovered it? I mean, did they miss it in a previous audit or?
It was in their 2017, 18 audit.
It was a substantially smaller amount that year. And I believe they had, it was directed to have that repaid and that was what was expected was happening. And then it was uncovered the next year, but that is not what's happening. God pardon.
The city's received its 2019 to 2020 audit, correct, back from them?
Yeah, we've received that report when we were in the GMARC. I believe it was for sale.
2019, 2020?
No.
No, we're still, we're still waiting on that. We haven't done the, we haven't done that audit yet.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Wouldn't that be what this one is? Did we have a, do we have a miss?
No, because we've approved them to do that audit.
Okay.
The, so the hospital authority audit has to be complete before the city audit can be completed. Hospital Authority just got their audit back, and so now we can do ours for that fiscal It's slow getting these things, these things done, but we still have not, no, participated in the 2019-2020 audit, so we don't have that report yet. But what we're approving though is for them to do the 2020-2021 audit.
Is there a particular date that we have to have approved to go with an audit firm by, or can we postpone this for a month or so to seek other bids? I guess I pulled their most recent peer review for 2020 and it's, I guess in my opinion, is unfavorable because of some of the deficiencies they found with that other company. And I printed it off and I'm having to pass it around if other people would like to look. So I think it is probably where it, the deficiencies are on the back page of production letter. Sorry. But yeah. So I think it is possibly in the city's interest to at least seek other bids if possible.
Can you highlight what some of those, so we don't have to all read them, what some of those deficiencies are?
I guess specifically, I'll just read this on the last line. Finally, during our review, we noted an audit engagement had disclosed a materially, material unfunded pension plan liability in the footnote. However, the firm did not document its testing of the actuary or planned audit, recalculation of the pension-related amounts, or the testing of the census data. Their final review by partner did not identify the omitted documentation. So just, it also outlines some issues that they have with some of their practices where it requires two major, two major partners to review some of that work, and they found other issues with them following through with some of their compliance requirements and stuff.
What entity was that part of?
The peer review committee of the OSCPA, Stephen F. Condon. I got this directly from their website, Angel Johnston and Blazing Game PC. They offered it on the back of their documentation. You have to find their actual website because it is not listed. Yeah, I guess it is improperly listed, the documentation they supplied to the city. I think they got a new IP address and did not update their URL in their documentation.
Okay, so their, their final paragraph in their opinion, except for the deficiency previously described, the system of quality control for the accounting and auditing practice of Angel Johnson Blazing Game, in effect for the year ended April 30th, 2020, has been suitably designed and complied with to provide the firm with reasonable assurance of performing and reporting in conformity with applicable professional standards in all material aspects.
I would say except for the deficiencies of a term of being able to fly a cook.
Well, I mean, all that tells me they're not perfect.
Was there more deficiencies listed than the one dealing with the pension?
No. Unless I'm missing something.
In that paragraph, just outlining some of their details and how they do not follow their own best practices. And failure to update some compliance paperwork, but they said it, they had just not obtained the book by them. I think is their justification.
It says, Angel Johnson Blazing Game has received a peer review rating of pass with a deficiency. And so firms can receive a rating of pass or pass with deficiency or fail. And so they received a pass with a deficiency under the peer review.
I'd like to make a motion to table the engagement of.
You got a pending motion on it?
That's right. That's right. Sorry. And I don't believe I can amend my motion to table it.
No.
Got to vote it down. Was there a second?
Yeah, Randy seconded. The motion was to engage Angel Johnson Blazing Game.
So can you give a, your judge's understanding of what the issue is?
So they got peer reviewed by another CPA or CPA firm, and the other CPA firm found deficiencies in their own best practices that they're not doing their own best practices, is what the letter says. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a huge deal, but it's also one of those kind of things that we've had issues with auditing in the past. And I would, I mean, I just want to review it. I'm not saying I'm not going to engage them. I would just like time to review it with new information being brought to light, so.
And this is dated June 26, 2020.
It is their most recent one that they have listed on the website.
And that is on Johnson and Angel and Blazing Games website, or on that company?
On their, on the Johnson one that's actually listed.
Now, that was CPA firm.
Basically double-checked their work and found in, and found in one thing. I mean, it was, just double-checked their work and found things that they weren't following, even though they were supposed to be following them according to their own guidelines.
They found, they found one deficiency, is what they found.
I mean.
But that is the deficiency. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, as I said, I just want time to be able to review it.
You probably could find that, anybody can take one firm, look at another firm and find issues.
I mean, my other thought is, is that was done June 26, 2021, or 2020, which probably means there's another peer review that's sitting out there somewhere that may come out in the next week or two that either clarifies or on record.
At any rate, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion before I call the vote? Please call the vote.
Winters?
No.
Stelling?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Dowling?
No.
Sherman?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, that motion failed. Do we ask for another motion, or is it just it?
That's up to you. I mean, you, you don't need to table it because it failed. So I'd say you'd be bringing it back to the board, get the information whatever the council wants to satisfy themselves. Or a representative from their firm to kind of make a presentation or whatever. Are we going to, I mean, we put it out for bids again, are we going to then find all the deficiencies against every, every firm? And then discount them and keep going on and on?
I'm not saying I wouldn't confirm it. I'm just saying I, with new evidence brought to light, I'd like to look at it. I'm not saying we go out for a bid for it. I'm just saying, with new evidence brought to light, I'd like to look at it. So that's all, I mean.
It's where I stood on.
Yeah. I'm not saying yes or no. I know everybody, I mean, we all get bad Google reviews. If you own a business, you're going to have some. It's not like it's, you know, so, I mean, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, I, I didn't know that before I came in here. Now that I do know it, I'd like to take a closer look. And with no time crunch on it, I don't understand why we wouldn't take a closer look.
So we need. I'll get, I'll get with Chris Angel and see if he can explain the deficiency and whether it's been corrected and if there are any others. I want to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
So I can talk to him. You need this?
No, I can send you the email and.
It's not terrible to find on the website either.
No.
It's about who we are or something. It's a little neat, but.
And I assume that's the link that will be updated when we move.
Item 15 is discussion and recommendation on intergovernmental review consultation form for the Alba Arena Authority. Approving the form as prepared by the Alba Planning Commission. Recommendation was in the attachments in the agenda, but this is what the planning commission completed at the last planning commission meeting. Essentially, it's saying in a nutshell that the planning commission has, has considered the proposed activities of the arena authority and is in favor of them proceeding. And our approval of this form will allow the planning, or the arena authority to proceed with the funding strategies that they're seeking through the federal government.
I guess, I just saw the documentation where it probably seemed pretty lenient. Because is that just possibility of endangered animals in that reserve? Is that the likelihood of that? I just remember when the, I think it was Bank Central that tore down.
Oh, the bats?
Yeah.
I don't think there's any, there is no documentation of any endangered species in that area.
It just seemed unlikely, and it mostly pointed to, what, the river and the pond and all of that.
The lesser prairie chicken is further west. Are you sniping?
Some motion?
Yeah, I just need to, we would need a motion to approve the form prepared by the planning commission.
Motion to approve the intergovernmental review consultation form for the Alba Arena Authority?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the intergovernmental review consultation form for the Alba Arena Authority as prepared by the planning commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Item 16 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307B2 to discuss contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma.
Motion to enter executive session?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Stelling to enter into the executive session. Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, I'll ask council members, legal counsel, and clerk to remain. And item 18 is action on contract negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma.
I'd make motion to approve contract with IFF Local 3782 of Alba.
I'd second.
Fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Is that your motion?
It's fine.
Because that's your second.
I just agree the law was in the deal, so.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling and a second by Mr. Dowling to approve the IAFF Local 3782 contract for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
All right, we have an approved contract. I don't believe there's any new business that we can discuss that fits that qualification. Number 20 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
I'd like to say Cruz was amazing.
I heard it was good.
It was really good. A lot of people out. Good fans.
Anything else? All right, then we are adjourned for the city council meeting, and we will open the Alba Utility Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Brooks?
Here.
Stelling? Bowman?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
She can go ahead and call here.
Yeah, go ahead and call her.
Here.
She's still.
She's still not here, but Taylor and Randy are here. Okay, item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 21st, 2021. B, approval of claims in the amount of $100,432.62 and payroll expenses of $65,442.2. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, and we will adjourn that meeting and open up the Alba Utility Authority, or excuse me, the Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Brooks?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Beer? Sherman?
Here.
Dowling?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Winters?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 21st, 2021. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on July 7th, 2021. And approval of claims in the amount of $29,157.75 and payroll expenses of $16,717.97. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Dowling?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you for the minute.